Good evening. This regular meeting of August 10th, 2020 of the Dubuque Community School District Board of Education is called to order. Our mission is to develop world-class learners and citizens of character in a safe and inclusive learning community. Roll call, please.
Bradley.
Here.
Donahue.
Here.
Parks.
Here.
Prohaska.
Here.
Ryan.
Here.
Sancy.
Here.
Whitman. And we will start off with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam President, I move that the Board of Education approve the agenda as submitted, except for item Roman numeral number five, the public hearing on the revised 2020-21 school calendar, because there is connectivity problems within the city. And we, in case anybody else needs to connect or show up at the meeting, I think we should move that.
To the end.
We'll move it to the end of the...
To the end. We'll move it right before our new business, I would say.
Okay. Second. It has been moved and seconded to approve the agenda as amended. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Any aye. Any opposed?
Aye.
Oops. That motion carries. I have to remember Anderson's online. I have to wait for his...
He's not just slow.
I know. It's the delay of that.
Go back.
I move that the Board of Education approve the minutes of the regular meeting on July 20th, 2020 as submitted.
Second. It has been moved and seconded that the Board of Education approve the minutes of the regular meeting on July 20th, 2020 as submitted. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. All right. We will do the public hearing on the sale of the district vehicle.
I move that the Board of Education receive and file proof of publication notice of public hearing on the sale of a district vehicle and authorize payment of the legal notice publication cost to the Telegraph Herald.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded that the Board of Education receive and file proof of publication of notice of public hearing on the sale of a district vehicle and authorize payment of the legal notice publication cost to the Telegraph Herald. Is there any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. Anybody wishing to talk about... Oh, you want to go ahead and give us an update? Yes, please.
Quick overview. Yeah, last month, a district-owned 2012 Ford Escape with 91,000 miles was offered for sale on Gov. Deals. The final bid was $5,231.25 from a gentleman in Greenville, South Carolina. Book range, book value ranges from $3,500 to $6,000 depending on the condition and the features. Therefore, buildings and grounds recommends accepting the bid and selling the vehicle as is.
Anybody online or in... Have anything they want to... Okay.
I move that the Board of Education approve the sale of a 2012 Ford Escape to Raymond Williams for $5,231.25.
Second. It has been moved and seconded that the Board of Education approve the sale of a 2012 Ford Escape to Raymond Williams for $5,231.25. Is there any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. And Board salutes. Do you have some?
Yes. I have two board salutes. Let's give a board salute out to the Hempstead Varsity Baseball Team and Coach Jeff Rapp. We're qualifying for the state baseball tournament. They represented our city and district well by getting to the semifinals. So congratulations to the Mustang baseball team. I'd also like to give a shout out and a board salute to the Dubuque Community School District Administrative Team and Superintendent for the tireless hours spent in planning the Return to Learn Plan, for all the organizing and taking into consideration all the aspects of these unprecedented times that we have. So Stan, thank you to you and your team for all their hard work.
They've been putting in a monster amount of hours doing great job.
Yeah. Thank you. Anyone else?
I have one. A board salute to the Dubuque Black Men Coalition, St. Mark Youth Enrichment Multicultural Family Center, and other partners for a very successful back-to-school bash on Friday. Anderson can correct me, but I think we gave out over 500 bags to families in a little over 30 minutes. So it was very, very well attended and nicely organized by those groups.
Good. Thank you. Visitors in open forum.
I move the Board of Education suspend the rules of order and go into open forum.
Second. It has been moved and seconded that the Board of Education suspend the rules of order and go into open forum. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. Any person wishing to address the Board can do so at this time.
Just a point of clarification, this is for non-calender-related items, is that correct?
Correct. Yep, this is for...
So I'm just going to... I see Rena Sheehy on the list of attendees with a hand raised. Would you mind just putting your hand down if you do not wish to speak? Or if you... Well, let's see if I can just have you speak to see. Rena Sheehy, I've unmuted your microphone and you're allowed to speak. Could you let us know if you're wanting to speak on calendar-related issues or another issue, please? You should be able to unmute your microphone.
Mike, it's Ernie. I was just checking into the meeting. Sorry I missed that. Was a...
Okay. Thanks, Ernie. We'll go ahead and lower your hand then.
Okay.
Good to know he checks in.
Then there are none.
All right. Thank you.
I move that the Board of Education reinstate the rules of order and return to regular session.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded that the Board of Education reinstate the rules of order and return to regular session. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries.
I move the Board of Education approve those items listed in the consent agenda.
Second. It has been moved and seconded that the Board of Education approve those items listed in the consent agenda. Are there any items any Board members wish to have pulled? They're being done. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. And that takes us to Facilities and Support Services Committee report. Mr. Prohaska.
Yes. We met last Tuesday. First item that we were presented with was the bids received for face masks for our students and staff. And the lowest bid was not guaranteed as of the date that we needed it, and there was a better design and quality of face masks. Therefore, the bid was awarded to a local supplier. We also had an update on current district projects. The Alta Vista Vocational Technical Building, its completion will be in early January. And I guess they're going great guns on this. They've got the entrance all done and everything. We also had a report on the Hempstead Serving Kitchen Equipment Replacement. The dishwasher has finally arrived from Europe, so they'll be ready to go for the start of the school year. We also had a report back on the Hempstead High School parking lot expansion. Everything is in order there. Looks very good. The only thing left was the handrail, and I assume it's probably done by now.
I don't believe the handrail has arrived yet.
Well, the handrail has not arrived. Then we had a report on the senior high renovation phase two. Straka Johnson Architects are continuing to work on the design and development. The core planning group met on July 29th. We had in attendance some friends of Lamb Hedeman Auditorium. We attended the meeting and shared thoughts about the auditorium aspects of the senior high renovation. And they are going to be consulting with a theater consultant, which will give more input into their planning. The mechanical systems are discussed. Geothermal apparently is not a good fit for senior high school. And overall, that was kind of basically it. Our committee will be meeting again shortly.
Right.
Hempstead High School Underground Geothermal Vault Replacement was discussed. The old vault was removed and the new one is put in. The Irving Elementary School Storms Water Improvements are all completed. We had a report from Synergistic regarding their startup things for the beginning of the school year. Mr. Kelleher presented a review of the expenditure history of Pebble and Safe. And he also presented an item on the issuance of new bids for soft drinks for our concession stands. That was about it.
All right. Thank you. Education Programs Policy Report. Ms. Bradley.
Thank you. I'm happy to report on behalf of Lisa Whitman, the committee chair. We essentially dealt with three policies made in the course of updating every policy every five years. So they're on a continuous cycle, and we dealt with three, and we forwarded three to our next meeting because of the length of the meeting. Otherwise, four things came forward for discussion, consideration. The first is a final draft of the proposed bylaws of the Community Educational Equity Advisory Committee. Our equity coordinator Taj Suliman is creating a today version of that committee and is repurposing, not repurposing, but bringing it forward for action and involvement in equity issues in our district and our community. And so he brought us the final bylaws. That'll come forward as a motion to approve. Secondly, we heard from Julie Lang about the online platform called Ingenuity. Parents who have, about 900 parents have chosen to have their children do all online, which will, for grades six through 12, that will mean that they will be working with the Ingenuity program along with certified teachers from our district.
Nancy, just a point of clarification, that number was just for the secondary, the 19th.
Oh, just secondary. Oh, thank you.
When you look at K-12, the number is north of a couple of 2,000.
It is. Okay. Very good. Thank you. Thank you. And Ingenuity is an online platform. Some will be familiar with it. It's been used for nine years in our district as a part of the credit recovery program for many students who have really benefited. It aligns with the Iowa Core Curriculum, and interestingly enough, it provides instruction not only in all of the core areas, English Language Arts, Math, Science, Social Studies, but as well World Languages, Electives, Career and Technical Education, and Advanced Placement offerings for six through 12. So it's a program of considerable respect throughout the state and has been tried and true. And with the addition of some of our teachers working with our students who are involved, we think it'll be very successful. The Dubuque schools shows that for a variety of reasons, but I think our parents can know that it is a well-respected platform for us to use. And in addition, the content leaders in our district will be working to customize the courses in Ingenuity, really just to align the course with the courses being offered in our schools for those students who are there as well. So parents and community can know that the online version will have an exact parallel with the courses that are being taught in person with our hybrid option for parents. So I think we're looking at what we believe will be a seamless transition there, and are pleased with that recommendation.
Nancy, could I jump in again? I'm sorry.
No, please.
Before the meeting.
Oh, no.
There's a slight change to that with World Language.
Okay.
So we're going to Zoom with our teachers for fourth-year Spanish and fourth-year French, and then all of German. Just because when our content leaders and the folks that looked at where they were at for fourth year, we weren't comfortable with where our students needed to be. So we are going to actually Zoom and personalize the fourth-year language.
That sounds great.
It's a good alternative. I apologize if you took the...
No, please. Please. Things are moving so quickly. Any update that you can give us to make it more accurate is very helpful. Thank you. The third topic was the Iowa Association of School Boards and Urban Education Network priorities for legislative session. It'll be here before we know it. And long story short, four initiatives will be considered those going forward from the Dubuque Community School District at the behest of the Board and the Superintendent. So they are, in a nutshell, the first is state funding, the state funding formula. We know that in the last 20 years, the amount of poverty in the state of Iowa has nearly doubled. Kind of a staggering number when you think about that. And quite frankly, the school funding formula has not caught up and kept pace with the kinds of needs that result from that. So we're looking at supporting the additional funding coming through the state funding formula, and that would help us with meeting the needs of low-income, non-English-speaking students, those at risk of dropping out, and in general, programs for student success for all students. That's the first priority. Second priority is in the area of preschool. For a very long time, our statewide voluntary preschool program has afforded us half of regular funding for our K-12 students. So it's a .5 full-time equivalency. This priority would advise the state to increase that to a 1.0. In other words, to double the funding, which gives us the opportunity to provide additional funding for our four-year-olds who now are relegated to a half-day program. And it would also provide opportunity for transportation as a potential to further support our families with four-year-olds. The third one is mental health. We feel strongly as a Board that the amount of needs for our students in the area of mental health deserves for this to be one of the highest priorities we can put forward. This particular recommendation would establish comprehensive community mental health systems that would focus on prevention, treatment services, comprehensive school mental health programs, as well as training for our faculty and staff members who are working with our students. So mental health is the third area, and the last is in the area of the area education agencies. The state is divided, I believe, into eight geographic areas. Each is called an area education agency, and this priority would recommend full funding continued for those who service us in the form of the AEAs. Our AEA is Keystone Area Education Agency. It does a terrific job of supporting our staff and our students and our families in a multitude of ways. They include special education, technology, professional development, curriculum assessment, and student assessment data analysis. Folks who come in and work shoulder to shoulder with our adults and with our students. So we support continued funding as one of our four priorities. So those are the four priorities. And the last was the Return to Learn Plan, which will you be speaking about?
I will probably give a brief update with that along with the calendar.
Okay.
The main focus of the hearing is the calendar, but how those two play together is probably important.
Very good. Then I won't spend time with that, other than to say that we had a considerable discussion and had received a good amount of input from the community, from families, from others about the Return to Learn Plan. And so we will be moving forward with that later in the agenda, including the hearing. So, Madam Chairperson, I have three recommendations, three motions to put forward on behalf of that work. The first is that I move that the Board of Education receive and file the reopening challenge petition.
Second.
And in a nutshell...
In discussion, you can give it in a nutshell.
Oh, okay. Very good.
We have, it's been moved and seconded that the Board of Education receive and file the reopening challenge position, discussion. Now you can...
Just so that the community is aware what that is, on August 4th, we received a petition with 1,389 signatures calling for three things. Number one, delaying the start of the school year until after Labor Day. Number two, starting the school 100% virtually until COVID-19 cases have significantly declined in our community. And thirdly, to challenge some of the mandates that have come forward from the governor. And so that petition by the motion seeks to receive and file, not looking for action beyond that.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries.
I also moved that the Board of Education approve the Community Educational Equity Advisory Committee bylaws that were brought forward.
Second. It has been moved and seconded that the Board of Education approve the Community Educational Equity Advisory Committee bylaws. Is there any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries.
Last motion, I move that the Board of Education approve the Iowa Association of School Board and Urban Education Network legislative priorities as presented.
Second. It has been moved and seconded that the Board of Education approve the IAFB and UEN legislative priorities as presented. Is there any discussion? Did we do the UEN on there?
The UEN will come.
It'll come, yes.
I think we basically submit the same ones.
Yeah. It does come back up, right? At the UEN, at the IAFB Annual Convention, the night before, there's the UEN dinner, and the steering committee of the UEN discusses the legislative priorities of the overall UEN, which does usually match.
Historically, it does match.
And in its essence, I believe it's indicating which our priorities as a Board are and as a district.
Right.
For legislative action.
Right. It's what we've put forward as our pick.
That's right.
Doesn't mean it wasn't a...
We often, also, the way in conjunction at the city's legislative night, add to that. We're limited to four by rule at IAFB, but usually by the time our local agenda is flushed out, there are seven, six, seven agendas. So we will circle back around to legislative priorities as it gets closer to the session. And certainly, we will advocate for those four, but often we add two or three more, have six or seven total.
Good. Okay. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. Okay. We'll circle back to the school calendar public hearing.
I move that the Board of Education receive and file proof of publication of notice of public hearing on the revised 2020-2021 school calendar and authorize payment of the legal notice publication cost to the Telegraph Herald.
Second. It has been moved and seconded that the Board of Education receive and file proof of publication of notice of public hearing on the revised 2020-2021 school calendar and authorize payment of legal notice publication cost to the Telegraph Herald. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. All right. We will move forward with any public comments. I will remind commenters to please state their name and address for the record, and to please limit your comments to three minutes or less.
So if I could, I might have like put the calendar on the screen, and I'll just talk through briefly what the recommendation was, I guess, a week ago. So if Mike can pull that up?
Yep. Give me just one second.
Okay. So two years ago, we established our calendars in a two-year cycle. We established a calendar that would have started this school year following Iowa law on August 24th. We're not allowed to start prior to the 23rd of the month of August in a normal school year. Earlier this spring, we were given permission to back that start date up, up to as close to the 1st of August as, you know, a district could feasibly afford or make happen. So at that point, I recommended to the Board that to reestablish some learning opportunities for our kids that had been lost, that we move our start date forward with students coming back on the 13th for orientation and then starting school. As the process has unfolded, and we have developed multiple plans, a fully online, a hybrid, and then, of course, the full attendance plans for the district, and started looking at the data, and late the week before, the proposal to move it back to the 24th was made, the most common question we heard from parents was about contact tracing and when will you close schools, particularly because they're trying to make a decision about whether they wanted to participate in hybrid or start in the fully online model. 22% of our families chose the online model, 78% chose to attend in person. As the date approached to do that, a question that came to me most often and to others, probably Board members, was how will we know when there's a positive case in our child's school? How will we know, and what's that communication going to look like around contact tracing? That was handed off quite late in the game to the county health department, as well as the folks at the city health department. In conjunction or in conversation with them, we knew that we wouldn't have that plan fully in place in a way that we could inform the public what that would look like, in a way that really gave parents a fair opportunity to judge whether they would like to stay at home or choose the hybrid. So making the recommendation to push back the start date to our original start date, the 24th, so students would have a traditional 180-day school year, we would lose the opportunity for those early days. But quite honestly, we weren't in a system, in a place with the system to be able to really inform parents of what some of those things look like. Quite honestly, we're still working through that process. We've met twice with the county. We have met once without the county, where it was just Western Dubuque, Holy Family, Dubuque Community School District, to make sure we're following a similar system of how we're going to do contact tracing and when parents would be notified. One of the things that we're working on is creating a dashboard by school. If you have a positive, if your child is directly exposed, you'll get a phone call. You might get two. You might get one likely from the school district, but also you might get one from the county, but we don't want to necessarily wait on that, so there might be a duplication of that. But we're also going to start tracking things on a dashboard, so as a family, you would know how many cases at Carver Third Grade there were, and then how many total cases at Carver there were. That's sort of a dashboard, so families can look at that. So the recommendation really is to move the start date back a week-ish, a little over a week, to really give us an opportunity to organize ourselves around that piece of it. It also gives us an extra week to look at data. The data, we're at about 10.5% positivity rate of those tested today on the 14-day average. So hopefully, that extra week gives us some time. That wasn't our primary goal, but it certainly is a secondary goal, especially with the new mask mandate that might allow for better numbers moving forward. And I can talk a little bit about numbers in the administrative update piece, but really, as far as the calendar is concerned, it was focused on making sure we had the safest environment possible for our students and for our staff. You know, it's important to mention staff because we can't operate a school district without staff. Bus drivers, food service, paraprofessionals, and certainly our teachers. So that, we want to be able to always keep everybody well-informed about that. Just an interesting side note, since we had that last conversation, we have had 83 families contact us who had chosen online originally, who now want to come on a hybrid scenario. And we have had 70 families who are hybrid who now want to go online. So it just shows you that really people looking for as much information as they can get to make the right choice for their sons and daughters or their students. That's kind of the abridged version of last week, but I think many people probably were wishing to speak her last week as well.
So Stan, are we going to, or did we resurvey the parents?
Resurvey for what purpose?
For, let's say, hybrid or...
No, because we know what their answers are because they've chosen.
Okay.
Right? We know that 22% have chosen online and 78% have chosen in person. So that, I mean, it's better than a survey, actually, because they've actually registered for one of those two options.
So also then, I was under the impression that the county health, or the county Board of Health, or whatever, would be the only ones that would be notifying parents, but the school district would be...
Well, we had that conversation, and we are concerned about quickly notifying parents. And so we'll utilize a process that certainly complements what they're doing. We certainly don't want to be, you know, we do want to work together, but we think we probably, as a three school districts... we probably, as the three school districts involved, can make that connection a little more quickly, or at least as quickly. And so we'll survey that. And if over time, county health is beating us to that phone call, we may change and not do that phone call, but we want to make sure families are notified as soon as possible.
Okay. Thank you.
So we just needed an extra week for a variety of reasons.
Okay.
So at this point, for public comment, we don't have anyone at Keystone tonight. We did check down there. We had a room set up. So if you are on the Zoom call and you wish to address the board during public comment about the calendar, if you would please use the raise hand feature in Zoom to signify that you wish to address the board. Again, for those attendees who are listening to the meeting or watching the meeting via Zoom, if you wish to address the board regarding the school calendar, please use the raise hand feature in Zoom to signify that you wish to address the board. Except thirty. I am seeing none.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. I move that the Board of Education approve the revised 2020, 2021 school calendar as presented.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded that the Board of Education approve the revised 2020, 2021 school calendar as presented. Is there any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? That motion carries. New business? I don't have anything on the agenda for that, so we'll go to administrative issues. Mr. Rangdan.
So just a couple of comments around administrative issues. You know, one of the things that we're working on is what are the metrics by which we will make a recommendation to move to a different form of learning? As you know, right now, the recommended start is hybrid, 78% of our students are coming in that method, or fully online at parent choice. The state has provided a variety of different metrics. They would, currently, according to the metrics, the 0 to 14% would be all in person. And so obviously, my recommendation has been to start in hybrid. I do think it's important to sort of challenge our community to say that when we get to 5%, we will bring back, we'd be thrilled to bring back all the students who are in the hybrid mode. So instead of doing the A-B split, both, the A and B would be there every day, you know, and then I'm sure, well, we'll see. At that point, there might be some people say, well, we want to go to online, or online might want to come back. But we'll always, when we make major changes, make an opportunity for parents to indicate to us if there's a reason for them to not continue in their current learning style. I think it's important, on the other end as well, to set some targets. The states saying really that at the 15% to 20% range, you should be in hybrid, you could ask for a two-week hiatus to go online, and at 20% positivity rate, you could ask to go fully online. Permission, so for a school district to move to that without permission, currently, those days would not count towards your total of 180 days. And so that's sort of the, I guess, the character, the stick part of that equation.
And that, just for clarification, that is still a 14-day average?
It's a 14.
The positivity rate?
Yes. So quite honestly, the other reason that we pushed, that we've come to find out is that there's some disagreement on that. So the state average, we believe, is taking the 14-day averages and averaging the 14-day percentages, right? And then dividing those percentages by 14 and coming up with the average percentage positive rate versus taking the total number of tests and total number of positives and doing that math and getting the percentage. And that gives you two different numbers. So that's one of the things we're also working with because one is averaging percentages and one is actually averaging total tests.
It's almost weighting it based upon the number of tests, right?
I'm sorry, I didn't hear that.
I mean, that's kind of what that does, is it waits the positivity rate based on the number of tests, right?
Correct. Where it's taking the whole number. So we're still, there's still some friction around that. We've had some folks in our community who reached out to legislators and others to ask for some clarification on that, and we appreciate that. We've had that same conversation with the other schools in our county. But I think it's important to tell, or at least have a conversation, and we know that we're starting the first part of the school year in a hybrid, but, you know, I guess I would say that to the board, that when we get to the 14, moving to 15%, should we get there? And I hope that we don't get there. My recommendation will be to move to an online scenario. We will certainly send in the appropriate paperwork to the state and notify them and ask for permission, but we've also been told that the turnaround for that may not be as timely as we'd like for it to be. So I think when we get to that point, my recommendation is that we have a trigger to put us in the online learning for our students. And again, we're at 10.5 today, so I don't know, I don't believe. I think with the mask mandate, a lot of things, I'm not sure we'll ever get to 15. I sure hope we don't. I hope we're going the other direction. But I do think it's fair for the community to know at 5%, we'll be thrilled, beyond thrilled to have our students back. At 15%, we're going to say that the risk is too high for our students and we're going to move to an online virtual learning model.
So I assume we're all ready to go for the 24th, first day? Is that the first, the very first day then?
So teachers, our professional develop sessions begin this week and students on the 24th, there are some orientation days the week prior to that for families at the elementary and for sixth graders and for ninth graders. We're going to do a two-day orientation, one for the B-Day students on Thursday, because that's their day, and then the A-Day students on Friday. And then we'll start a regular rotation after that.
I'd just like to give a shout out also. I know that there's going to be little extra challenges for our custodians, our paras, our bus drivers, and we appreciate all the work that they do and the time that they're spending for this.
Absolutely. We have, like, as I've said a lot, we've got a great team in all of those areas paying attention to how we best serve students in the safest way. And I'll see things on, you know, ads or whatever and forward them to Bill or Charlie, and they've already thought about those things two weeks ago. So they have a great plan of how we're going to keep our buildings clean and sanitized. And we will even work with, you know, classroom teachers and some degree students, like, what is your role in making sure that the classrooms are clean and the hand sanitation and, you know, all those different ways that we protect each other. We're good to go.
I appreciate knowing that you would bring forward a recommendation for changing the format at 14 or 15%.
Yeah, so if we're headed to 15, so if we're at 14-plus and rising, I think we'd need to jump on that. And again, I will absolutely send in the paperwork to the state requesting permission, but I also know we've been told that that could be many, several days away. And so for us to wait during that time, especially when there's an escalating increase of positive cases, seems to be not as timely as our kids deserve.
I think that's the right and responsible thing to do. I appreciate that.
And I hope we never get that.
Absolutely. Absolutely.
I appreciate that we, that we're talking about our own metrics and thinking about what's right for our communities, that locally, we can make the right decisions about what our kids need. And I think especially as this day gets closer for schools to start, it's starting to get real for me as a mom, like, they're really going. And so knowing that, you know, we're doing everything we can to keep them safe is so crucial right now.
And I think one of the things that maybe hasn't been widely discussed is that we did run over 100 students in a summer school scenario this summer, 10 students in a classroom, socially distanced desks, face masks by students and staff, hand sanitation, and didn't have any known positive or spread occurred during the summer school, the weeks that we had summer school. So we do have a model or a small pilot that took place that was 100, more than 100 students. And so we're taking that, trying to bring it to scale with the, with, you know, with all of our buildings. So that gives me some great hope. Good.
Any other issues? Okay, they're being done. We are adjourned. Thank you.